But this is a public hearing on the town budget and the tax rate for fiscal year 2015-2016. Anybody who wants to comment on the budget or the tax rate, please line up on the wall here and come up to the podium. Seeing nobody rushing over there, we will adjourn the public hearing and we will begin the town council meeting. Let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think the mayor has a presentation. All right. Waiting for some somebody? Okay. Approval of the council minutes. We've got the April 6th town council minutes, the April 6th closed meeting minutes, and the April 15th closed meeting minutes, which I read while I was at the polls today.
And I did the same, and I would make a motion to accept all three as written.
Seconded by Ken Phibus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Police report. I know we have a trooper here. Here we go. Welcome.
Hello. How are you?
Good, sir.
Yes. Thanks for joining us.
For the record, Corporal Steven Johnson, representing the Maryland State Police, for your police report. The total town calls we had in April were 394. Calls out of town were five. Arrests. We had a total of 22 arrests in the month of April, and of those, we had four adult, one juvenile, three DUIs, two for controlled dangerous substance, four warrants, and two civil citations. Premise checks, we conducted 38 school checks, 22 residential checks, and 140 business checks. Traffic stop stats, 201 total, 118 citations, 125 warnings. Accidents, we had 17 accidents in April. Five were reportable, meaning they required tow trucks. Twelve of them were superficial. The majority of our reports that were taken this month were for theft and ID fraud, being that it was tax season, a lot of people's social security numbers were getting used and filing taxes before they ever did.
Yeah, I noticed on here, "False tax report filed in complainant's name." That's not one we normally see.
No. Around April every year, people's social security numbers get used and their taxes get filed before they even know about it. So then they call us and they have to file a report and they have to go through the IRS.
I guess and then they try and get their refund?
Yeah, they try and get the refund, but most of the time, it's not granted.
Interesting scam.
It is. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, anyone? Well, hey, thanks for joining us.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I see anybody from the fire company here. All right, we will jump backward to the presentations.
Last month, I wore my Kiwanis pin. I have a proclamation. I'd like to ask the president of the Kiwanis to please join me. This is a proclamation in recognition of the Kiwanis International and the Mount Airy Club. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest organizations in the world with more than 600,000 members of all ages and abilities in more than 80 nations. And whereas the members of the Kiwanis Club of Mount Airy, Maryland are devoted to improving the world, one child, one community at a time, by seeking primacy to the human and spiritual rather than material values of life. And whereas, in addition to improving lives, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, personal development, and community service. Whereas, the first Kiwanis Club started in service in Detroit, Michigan, USA in 1915. And whereas, this year, 2015, Kiwanis International celebrates its centennial anniversary of the founding of the Detroit Kiwanis Club. And whereas, the Kiwanis Club of Mount Airy was established in May of 1949, and this year celebrates its 66th anniversary. And whereas, the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of Mount Airy continues to have a positive impact on our community and our citizens. Therefore, I, Patrick Rockenberg, Mayor of Mount Airy, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Kiwanis International Recognition Month. And hereby call upon all citizens and officials of our town to render support to the members of this organization and to make themselves aware of Kiwanis International, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to our homes, schools, and community. And witness thereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused a seal of Mount Airy, Maryland to be affixed on this fourth day of May 2015. Congratulations, Mr. Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate it. And yes, we are dedicated to improving the community, one child, one neighborhood at a time. We have several projects. The most recent one that you'll see coming up very shortly is over there at the elementary school and grounds, cleaning up the grounds, helping them get the grounds straightened out for the summer and the like. And we are involved with several other projects in the community. You'll see us with the fire parade and the like. You'll see us, there's several of us that are in the mentoring program over at the middle school and the like, helping kids, one kid at a time. I personally involved with that, and I enjoy it very much in watching the kid grow, okay? The first day I met him, two years ago, I asked him, "What do you want to do in life? What was his goal in life?" And he says, "I want to work for LEGO." And I says, "Doing what?" He says, "I don't care. I just want to work for LEGO." And I says, "You want to be a salesman? You want to design? You want to be business? I don't care. I just want to work for LEGO." So as an incentive, with the LEGO movie coming out, as an incentive, I said to him, "They have, their standards out there are Bs are, Cs are greater, no disciplinary problems, and attendance problems, no missing it, three attendance misses in a quarter." And I says, "If you can do that for two semesters in a row, I'll have the LEGO movie for you. We'll go see the LEGO movie." And he did. As a matter of fact, he made the honor roll. You know, he just wanted it so bad. Then the only problem presented, the only time I could get him out to the LEGO movie was on a weekend. I would not take him out during the week because we wouldn't get home until 10 o'clock at night and trying to get the kid up for school the next day. And he's involved with the scouts, and it seems like scouts were doing something every week. So I had to wind up and go get him the LEGO movie, and he enjoyed it. But again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, on behalf of the town council, myself. Here's the town pin. Very proud to present that to you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to the Kiwanis Club for their hard work. I really love these organizations do this because you guys do for $10 what the government would do for a million dollars. So that's great. That's great. Yeah, imagine what you could do with the government money if, to do that. All right. Citizens can, citizen concerns, citizen comments. This is a time we set aside for anybody who wants to talk to the council about anything. If you want to talk to us about some topic or something that's coming up, come on up to the podium, identify yourself, and start talking. I think everybody here is as tired as we are. So let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2015-5. This is our licenses section. Are we satisfied? I will. Now, we did a fair amount of updating on this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, we changed a number of things since last month. Do we want to adopt it tonight? Do we want to just reintroduce it tonight?
Can I suggest we reintroduce it? Because I know there are one or two questions about how we update lists and things like that, and given the late hour, and I know some of them.
Okay. Well, I will introduce it. Is there a second on the introduction? Scott seconds the introduction.
So enter and discuss next time.
Debbie's giving me the, I was going to say the finger, but that's not what I'm saying.
It's been a long day.
It's giving me this, well, she didn't have a pen. There, she's got it now. She's got a pen.
I received during the month, two calls wanting to be issued a peddler's license. Explained that it was already been introduced, probably adopted this month, and we were not issuing any at that time period, as we discussed. So, and they probably could meet the criteria in that short time period. Are we going to continue that for this month?
Well, I think that would probably be the mayor's decision as to whether he wants to continue to go with what we have until we get this passed. But it did sound like pretty much everybody at the table was like, "Let's, let's, since we've substantially changed this, it's really a new bill coming in, that we're going to introduce it and then actually vote on it next month." So I think that would be an executive, it would be an executive decision as to whether he wants to stop taking applications of the old rule.
The existing code's still in place.
Can we stop taking applications?
I mean, we did.
I would like to defer until a decision is made.
It sort of said we were.
If I can do so, I'm sure we should do so.
I don't think anybody could make the requirements that quick, but maybe. I mean, that's up, I'll do whatever.
I would, I'll say council's advice.
As a practical matter, you're probably right.
Put it in a pending file.
Meet the requirement
All right. Ordinance 2015-6. This is the ordinance to adopt the tax rate and the budget for fiscal year 2015-16. I will move that we accept both the tax rate and the budget.
I will second.
Got a second? Do we have any discussion, or have we spent enough nights discussing?
We have. I just, I just want to note that in order to balance the budget, the town pulled 5,000, $507,250 out of reserves to balance, make the books balance.
Okay. Well, I'd only add to that, that on paper, it shows that we would pull that out of reserves.
We budgeted to pull.
History, history shows we've never actually pulled that money out of reserves. We've actually grown our reserves every year.
And the amount.
So we budgeted to do it, not we have pulled, but we.
I don't have a pen. And also, the reason most of the items in there are actually capital projects that we routinely pull. That is what the reserves are for.
All right. Any more discussion on this, on the budget and the tax rate?
No, I was, you need your pen back.
Oh.
I was giving that to you because.
Okay, he has an extra pen. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. All right, up next. 2015-7. This is a text amendment in the industrial district for the purpose of allowing the veterinarian practices, animal boarding, animal boarding, things like that. This has to go to planning. So do we introduce it before sending it to planning, or we just send it right to planning?
You have to intro, right?
I think you intro.
Okay, do we have to intro?
That's why I was looking at Tom. Do we have to intro? Because, but there's a timeframe that starts, so I just want to make sure we meet all the rules.
That's right. You introduce it tonight, and theory, planning in the interim can get it, and then you can then.
Okay. I will, I will introduce it. Do we see a second? Scott has seconded. So this will go to planning, and there's a clock that's now running for them, correct?
Yes. I believe that they have to report within.
Some timeframe. 60 days?
60 days.
Okay, gotcha. All right, 2015-8. This is a budget amendment to reallocate $40,000 from the general operating budget planning and zoning department for a traffic study to the general fund capital budget for the Department of Public Works office and break room rehab. This is here for adoption. This is really just a, a shift in the budget. We're just moving something from one line to another. It doesn't actually change the line of the budget. It's something that we're going, "Hey, we're not spending it this year. Let's spend it here." We've, we've already introduced it, so I will move that we adopt ordinance 2015-8 to have a second. Chris is seconding it. Is there any discussion on that?
Just clarification, this is the take care of the, the break cap. We planned on doing this a while ago for when the guys are out, snow plowing, online, finding a place to go that's warm, they could rest before they get back in the truck. So it's something that's really necessary to take care of the employees. When they're busy, plow on the roads at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, there are, there are several times when they live, live for days at a time in that facility because they're on and off the shift, plow shifts.
Okay. Because it says, it says it's for a traffic study, but it doesn't say.
Right, combining two things.
Yeah, I saw the traffic study, but not the building.
It's a lot of traffic to get to the break room.
It was, it was, yeah, it was, right, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business. We've got North Main and East Ridgeville sidewalk engineer recommendations. Barney, this was yours.
The only thing different is we sent letters out in the last couple of weeks and received, everything went certified mail, and we've been receiving those cards back, so we know that people are getting those letters, so.
All right, so we didn't stop it, Ken. I would like to ask, I've since received some feedback, and I was very much a proponent of this. I have two concerns. One, it's my understanding that a lot of the school-aged children are no longer school-aged children in that area. They may not be walking there anymore.
Is this North Main?
It's my understanding that it may not be used. I'd like to actually do a, a study and talk to a few of the people up there. Plus, I'm not sure why we're doing it on this side of the street and not the other because the sidewalk's already finished further on the other side of the street. So with the council's support, I would like to revisit this particular project and make sure it's needed, and if so, where it can be best utilized. Because if we do do it, I think it might be better on the other side of the street.
For North Main Street.
For North Main Street. Because the sidewalk's longer on the other side. Why start where it's not? Start where it already is. Plus, if you go down far enough, you're going to pick up a sidewalk to nowhere eventually. So it makes a lot more sense on the other side of the street. But let's revisit to see if they need, I think Councilman Everett said that, and I did not agree with him, but since I've heard some feedback where it may not fully be needed.
Yeah, I mean, I would always recommend an abundance of caution before we expend the funds, so I agree with Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good idea just to stop and look again.
I'd like to take another look at this, just because things have changed.
So would you like us to table this? Is that what you're having?
I'd like to table it for another month.
Bob, Ken, Scott, I don't see any, everybody looks like.
You know, if it needs a motion to table it, I'll make it.
I don't know that we really need one to.
Okay.
You know, it's just.
Yeah, there's no motion before.
Yeah, there's no real motion before us, really.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Do you want to table both North Main and East Ridgeville?
Yeah, because there are two, there are two projects.
East Ridgeville, I, I've not received any feedback, other than I know that there was support, there's a lot of walkers still on that street that walk out. We have an industrial park at the end of that road.
And they've gotten their cards, so nobody's come in and complained about it. I would think maybe we want to go forward on that one.
That one, that one should move forward.
And, and we are actually, we've been invited to that, the opening of the lodge down there. And that's, that's right, where if we, if we go to that, we'll actually get an opportunity to look at that.
Well, and plus the parking, there's no parking down there, and the parking is actually up the street. You would need a crosswalk to get down. Again, just so the council knows, there are numerous families that walk that road. There's an industrial development at the end of that road, and trucks go up and down there. So that one, I think we're in agreement.
What, what do we need to do to get East Ridgeville going forward? Do we?
Just move forward with the study. I think that's all you were going to do this year, was study and then budget. We've already, we've already got.
The engineering, yep.
We're going to do the engineering this year. We've got it in the budget.
Yeah, let's call it engineering, not study. I mean, everybody understands we have to get engineering done to build something. You need the plans to build, and then you build. Study is like, we want to think about whether or not we want to do it.
Good point, good point. So, and we got, we have it in the budget to do next year, correct?
Correct.
Yep. So I think you're, what you're suggesting is, the budget's already passed, by consensus, we're saying, do the, right now, do the engineering on Ridgeville. By consensus, we're saying, hold off.
Hold off on North Main.
Hold off on North Main for another 30 days.
Right, and we're just doing it by consensus. It's already been passed.
Yeah, is that really the consensus of everybody here at the council, that we?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that would be.
Scott.
Do we need any more, Tom? I mean, seems like, okay. Then we're all set.
Okay, everybody's spelled.
Pledge is already passed.
New business, dog park fence replacement project recommendation.
Council President, I'll be.
Thanks, you Larry.
I'll be waiting for you to call me.
It doesn't say Heather next to it here, but go ahead, Heather.
Well, I am happy to present this on the behalf of Melissa Hoyle and Brian Johnson. They could not be here tonight, but essentially, they are asking for both the project approval and the budget line reallocation amount. The budget line item that we're talking about is the east-west park paving, in the amount of $70,000. That won't be going forward this year because of substantial considerations with regard to stormwater management. So the Director of Public Works, Mr. Johnson, has asked if the money, or a portion thereof of those monies could be reallocated within that line item to fund the replacement of the dog park fence. That dog park fence is currently a split rail, a five-foot split rail, and over the years, being exposed to elements, it has degraded some.
Yeah, it's probably at the end of its lifespan. From when we put it in, it was a short-term fence.
Absolutely. So the project consists of the removal and the installation of a five-foot vinyl coated chain link fence, and this type of fencing will be consistent with the other fencing within Watkins Park. The three phone bids, or actually, three personal bids, were received. They are noted on the backside of your staff report, and staff is recommending approval of the dog fence, dog park fence replacement to Long Fence Company in the amount of $19,280. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
So, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Did, did we look at using town staff to do the removal?
That is the one question that I do not know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So it's $19,280. So first, the first part of the job is removing the fence. Did we look at bidding the job, adjust them installing the fence and having town staff remove the rotted fence? Even if you had to pay town staff, say, some overtime, I would advise we could save money.
Can you, can you reach out to Brian and see if that's something that they can handle and not let me know why not?
Okay.
Because if we're paying a contractor to remove it, they're going to have margin on top of that, their labor rates are going to be higher, and if we can save $5,000, let, let's.
I totally agree.
The one advantage might be the contractor will come out and rip the fence down and put up the new one immediately. Whereas our guys will probably have to take the fence down when they get a chance to it, and then who knows when the contractor's going to come fit in the new one. So you may have a gap when you have the dog park.
Let's see. Well, let's see if we can coordinate it to drop it to day of.
Because the fence is essential, that it'd always be there.
Right. See if we can drop it to day of and get his feedback. And if it's anything where he can't do it, explain why. And that may be a reason.
Right. Even if you had a favor, Tom, I'm still saying that's important.
I agree.
Is this something where the town council could get approv, could give approval this evening?
With the, with the condition that we are going to look at a less costly way to do it? I would, yeah.
To pay the maximum amount to the long fence of 19.
Can we get approval for a maximum amount, with the understanding we're going to try to do it cheaper?
Then we'll see if we can do it cheaper.
It's a question to you.
That way, we can get moving on it.
I'm giving you a nod. Yeah.
I think Scott, you had a question at some point there, didn't you? Okay. Thought I saw it.
No, I, I just kind of looked at Tom, and he kind of gave the acknowledgement that yes, we can go that, and I'm fine with doing the maximum amount.
All right, I will move, we approve the 19.
One more question. Hopefully, it can answer.
The $19,280 is being pulled from parks, park projects and play equipment budget line?
That is correct, sir.
Are we, I just want to make sure that we're not shorting our kids versus, not that I'm against the dog park, but the kids take priority. So I just want to make sure that we're not shorting the children out of, you know, a potential park facility versus the dog park. So was there anything?
I don't think, I don't think we have a place that we're actually looking at buying that we're pulling this money from at the moment.
The, the project that this is being pulled from is the east-west park paving, like parking lot paving, and that's going to be more substantially involved with stormwater management than originally had thought.
So that's being pushed off.
And I, I agree. We could, let's do it.
All right, well, I, I move, we accept the bid of 19,280, with the condition that park staff see if they can cut into it. I see Scott seconding it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll advise the mayor of what we find.
Thank you. Good point, Councilman.
All right, okay. This next one is mine. Vote on policy regarding time of election results to be given to the council. A number of years ago, traditionally, when the votes came in after an election such as we had today, the town council meetings were way over by the time the votes came in. When we switched to computers a few years ago, the votes were ready instantaneously. And so we have the problem that if the votes come in, the votes in theory could be given while the council is still in session. And there could be a concern that somebody who's at the table who may have lost an election or something might do who knows what while we're working through the budget or something in order to create a problem. We have, since that first occurred, basically because of my policy as president controlling the budget, set a policy that the election results will not be given till the end of our meeting. However, I would like.
Controlling the agenda, right, not the budget.
Oh, yes, sorry. Controlling. Yes.
I knew that was a mistake, but I saw Pat's on.
You are correct. You are correct. Controlling the, yes, it's just me as council president controlling the agenda that I, that I've told them, "I'm not going to recognize you with the vote till our session is over." I, however, think it would probably be a good idea to make that an actual council policy that goes in the council policy book, so that it will always be that way.
Right.
So I will move that we adopt the policy, you know, from here going forth, that election results will not be given until the end of the council session. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott.
Bob's second.
Bob's second.
He's, he's the agenda.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Because Debbie is actually putting together an official rulebook, and she wants this to actually be in her book, so that when she retires and when everybody else is gone, that will remain the rule, because it's just pretty sensible. Okay, Mayor and Council reports, Mayor's report.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to start out reminding everybody about our Celtic Festival. It's going to be at the Carnival Grounds, May 9th. It's a fantastic event. Please go out and support it. It's probably one of the hugest events of its kind in this area, honoring Scottish immigrants. They have all kinds of physical fitness, where they throw javelin, log throws, they have Scottish foods. It's, it's a great event. You can wear your kilt. There's all kind of medieval kind of things. It's like our own mini, what's that thing they have?
Renaissance.
Renaissance festival. It's a mini Renaissance festival, so please join that.
I'm reminding everybody, we're gonna have the May Fest, May sixteenth, from ten AM to six PM, uh, and then on May seventeen, seventeenth, on ten to five, ten AM to five PM, boy, it's like I was at the election all day. The mutt run is coming up Saturday, May sixteenth, so, uh, bring your mutt and join us. That's to raise funds for the Dog Park. Ligonore High School, Safe and Saying, this is something that's been happening quite a bit, and I'd like to acknowledge Century Ford, they actually donate a car, uh, for this program. That is one heckin' investment, thank you Century Ford. Ligonore's High School, twenty-fourth Safe and Saying Celebration will be held at Knott's Arena at Mount St. Mary's, uh, excuse me, at Mount St. Mary's University on Tuesday, June second, following the seven PM graduation. It begins shortly after graduation at approximately nine-thirty and ends at five-thirty, uh, AM, when the graduates, when the graduates ride the buses back to Ligonore one last time. This keeps our kids safe and off the streets. This is supported by many generous donations from our wonderful supportive community. The entertainment consists of inflatables, mechanical bull, character drawings, karaoke, a money machine, much, much more, good clean stuff, keeping the kids off the streets and preventing them from drinking and possibly, uh, getting into danger. Prizes consist of cash, cast cards, college apparel, and, uh, Big Ten prizes. The biggest is a car donated by Century Ford. They have donated a car for this event for the past seventeen years. That's seventeen vehicles, Century Ford, right here in Mount Airy has given away. So if you're thinking about buying a car, think about buying local. And again, uh, the winners of the Big Ten prizes are chosen randomly at the end of the event. Anybody who wants to contribute by donating food prizes should contact Chip or Melissa Harner, uh, at Harner LHS, safenandatverizon.net, or just contact me, I'll put you in touch. I want to thank Chip and Melissa, who've been doing this for many years. Very proud, uh, to say that we now have an electric vehicle charging station up in the municipal lot. There'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony on May eleventh. We're one of the first municipalities in Carroll County to have, uh, a charging station. Just so people know, to use this is free. Most of the electric charging stations that I'm aware of are all free, and the thought behind that is, it takes you approximately three hours for a full charge. If you come downtown, even if you stay for an hour or two, it costs us about a buck to charge the car. That buck is money back into our, our tax, our tax revenue, because those people that are waiting an hour or down here eating in our restaurant, shopping in our shops, and promoting economic development downtown, not to mention the benefit of promoting this new technology. So, uh, we have a new electric charging station, I'd like to thank council, uh, President Peter Helt, who's been pushing me on this as well, and we're also on the waiting list for Tesla. Uh, they may put a charging station down here at no charge. And just so everybody knows, uh, that charging station, the labor was donated by Electrical Solutions, Mike Dixon, and so we only had to pay for the cost of the charging station. Even the cost of the charging station itself, about a thousand bucks, we're gonna get a fifty percent rebate from the state of Maryland. So, I mean, you just don't get it done any better than that, and that's the way we do things in Mount Airy. There's summer opportunities for, uh, students, it's about that time. I'm not gonna read this whole list, but it'll be in the newsletter, that'll be on print and online. There's several things our local students can do to get learning hours, a lot of fun things to do, working the carnival, working with beautification, over there with Mary Hushour, working with Dick Swanson and Mamza, a lot of fun events to do. Uh, I will be, uh, holding Mayor's forums, uh, every other Saturday in May, it'll be, uh, it looks like May ninth and May twenty-third from ten-thirty to twelve. And I do have a gem in Mount Airy, uh, GND Performance. Who knew we had a marina or a, uh, a boat supply right here in Mount Airy? We actually do, it's called GND Marine, they moved over from Frederick. They were established in nineteen ninety-two and they providing, they've been providing marine services to area residents for over twenty years. Gilbert Derry took his own passion for water sports and turned it into a thriving business from regular watercraft, uh, maintenance, winterizing, engine repairs, trailer repairs, bodywork, no job is too small, they'll winterize your boat, uh, they offer storage space for your watercraft, whether it's a jet ski or a forty-foot, uh, performance boat, so we do have a marine, marina right here in Mount Airy. So, uh, please reach out to GND Marine, uh, they're actually located on that stretch we talked about by the sidewalk. That concludes my Mayor's report, thank you for your patience, and I do have an appointment. Now, I want to apologize to the council members, I did not send this in advance, but I believe I did talk to each of you.
This is Donna Marie.
It's Donna Marie Needle for, uh, the Ethics, uh, excuse me, for the Economic Development Commission.
It's all move, we accept the Mayor's report, minutes per second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, EDC, Water and Sewer.
Gentlemen, I, I apologize, somewhere in that car out there of mine is an EDC and a Water and Sewer Report, but through the excitement of today, I could not find it as I was coming in.
And I looked in his car, I could see why he could not find it. There were like leaves in there.
And somewhere is the Mayor's coffee mug.
And the Mayor's coffee mug.
Yes, and there's a coffee mug of the Mayor's lost in that car, it's like a black hole.
So, uh, the only thing that I can tell you for sure is this, this coming Wednesday, we do have a Water, a Water and Sewer Meeting at seven o'clock. And I know EDC's been changed, it's one of our restaurant meetings, but I'm not sure when it is, so I'll get back to you on that. Please accept my apology.
All right, Beautification, Parks and Rec, that's me, I'll make this quick. On the park side, just want to mention that the, um, the, the mutt run is coming up on May sixteenth, uh, the movie night schedule's coming out, so you'll be seeing those throughout the summer, and the caboose is going to ultimately end up over here on the parking lot, just at the end of this row, um, on the far side of that parking lot, using some of that common ground in there, so I think that's a good spot for the caboose. Moving on real quickly to beautification, uh, they finished, uh, weeding and mulching the trees and stuff over in Watkins Park. They're going to begin to plant the garden around the sign in East West Park, um, and they had a request coming from them that they want Parks and Rec, which we will do, but, and also just kind of a town policy decision, is that when you rent the gazebo's, that we have this form that people fill out for the gazebo's, and we've gotten questions back from people who would rent the gazebo with things like, oh, are you gonna clean this up, are you gonna fix this up, are you gonna fix that up? So, the thought on beautification is that we may want to put something in this form that basically says, you're getting the gazebo as-is, you know, we're not gonna send somebody up there the day before to rake and sweep, and then we have, we have, you know, our bench is out there and the gazebo's there, but we're not gonna necessarily, you know, make sure that there's no leaves or anything like that. We're not gonna prep the area for you, we just don't have the staff for that, you know, and not for the.
Beyond, beyond our normal maintenance.
Right, for example, for, for five oh one C three events that are held there, we don't even charge anything, um, but, so, does that sound, you know, seem to make sense? That beyond our normal maintenance?
Beyond normal maintenance, we do clean up, yeah.
We, we do, right, beyond normal maintenance, okay, all right, 'cause we'd like to have that actually put on this forum, so we'll, we will work through that. And something else we're looking at is we're looking at new plants for the planters out here. If you notice, the old bush ones don't seem to be holding up real well, they're dying. So we're looking at some new plants to go in those, to hopefully spruce that up, and we can move on to P and Z and Community Center Task Force.
So, uh, planning, the planning meeting briefly, the planning approved a slight modification to the existing Prospect Mill site plan, and that's for McKenzie, the caboose. There were some concerns expressed in the community about safety where the caboose, McKenzie's ultimately placed. The developer presented a very detailed plan of when they finally place it, of, uh, pieces of fencing, which would make sure that the, you know, if their kids running around McKenzie, that there's no way they can get to the street, 'cause they'll be fencing around the sidewalk, protecting the children from, from entering the street. So, um, the Planning Commission approved that, since it was a modification to an existing site plan for the Prospect Mill. Planning also had a representative from IDA, Independent Development Authority. The IDA representative just kinda discussed at a very high level what the IDA sort of requires for the OPE zoning. So OPE, again, would be the zoning ordinance that the town would apply if it decided to go ahead with the Harrison-Lashere deal. So Planning will now take a look at the OPE, um, zoning category, finish it off, eventually bring it to the council, and then at some point, um, if the community decides to annex the land, um, that discussion will be held. And then last but not least, uh, we did approve, um, some signage, you'll notice the Wise Supermarket, um, there's a lot of upgrades going there, so, um, I think it'll be a good, good, uh, contribution to the community. Community Center Task Force continues to compile, um, the report on unmet community needs, as well as waiting for, um, town staff to finish off their study about the costs of small, medium, and large facilities. That concludes.
And they're meeting this Thursday.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and they are meeting this Thursday.
So if people in the community that are concerned or interested, please come out this Thursday to Community Center Task Force, uh, it'll be right here in Town Hall, seven or seven-thirty?
I believe seven, but check the.
Show up at seven fifteen, you'll be fine.
All right. Recycling and sanitation.
Thank you, uh, so we did not have a meeting this mon, uh, last month, we're, next meeting is gonna be on the twentieth at seven PM Town Hall. Uh, also wanted to point out to everybody, a couple of people asked me, I did the same thing this past weekend, put my yard waste out, didn't get picked up. That's 'cause the date is actually this Saturday, so for those of you that put it out, put it out again Saturday, and they'll be here to pick it up. That concludes my report.
Okay. Could I, I would like, I'd like to ask something on that. We have, and probably can take it offline, but I noticed town staff is using an area behind Prospect Park to put a lot of our old mulch and whatnot. I know years ago, we had a mulching center in Twin Ridge, people complained about the smell, and I don't know if the same thing would happen, but I did get a, a request from a citizen that wasn't happy with our every-two-week pickup, he wanted more frequent pickups, and asked if we could, and I told him he could take it to, uh, either Hoods Mill or Frederick or Westminster Dump, uh, but it's something we ought to start thinking about in recycling, maybe we could use, and I don't know if people over there will start complaining, I don't know, but let's just think about it.
Okay.
All right, Streets and Roads.
Yeah, we did have a walk around and, uh, a ride around to see what streets are gonna be paved and which ones are gonna be patched with Barney and Rachel, and it was very interesting, and I think that decision is made, right Barney? Okay.
Did Dave, uh, Purek go with you?
Probably.
Me and, uh, the chairman of the, uh, the chairman of the Streets and Roads, Tom went, Tom Fleming went also, and me.
Watching you Barney.
Dave is very busy.
We, we talked to Dave.
Dave is very busy. Dave is very busy.
Okay. Got by me this year.
And, uh, the only recommendation I have is for the residents not to throw their grass out in the street. I've seen a lot of grass, they throw it out in the street this year for some reason. Turn your lawnmower the other way and throw it on your yard, not in the street, someone really mess around, so, just a request, not to throw your grass clippings out in the street. Our next meeting is June twenty-fifth, that's our next meeting, that's my report.
All right. Town Administrator, Monica.
Uh, no report, just getting ready for litigation this week.
All right, Tom.
Just getting ready for litigation. I'll save it for the close meeting.
All right, we got the Code Enforcement Officer Report, um, which we all got a copy of, and that leads us to election results, Bruce. I thought, there he is. And, you know, before Bruce gets up here, I also want to say that, um, you know, I've been through several elections in this town, this was the friendliest one I've been through. You know, if, if everybody could make it, that unfortunately, you know, can't happen, but this was the best, you know, best group. We all split pizza tonight for dinner, you know, it was very nice, so.
Yeah, but you made the new guy pay, that wasn't.
Actually.
Actually, the old guy paid.
Chris paid.
We were waiting for you all to be blown away with the.
We almost beat you, we, we almost got done before you got here.
Bruce Walls, Chairman of the Board of Election Supervisors, good evening. As per town code, we conducted the town municipal election today. The polls were opened at seven o'clock this morning and closed at eight PM this evening. Our voting was as follows, there were four hundred and twenty machine, or, excuse me, four hundred and ten machine cast votes, there were ten absentee votes, and eleven write-ins, for a total of four hundred and thirty-one votes cast, which, considering we have six thousand, four hundred and fifty registered voters, that comes to a turnout of approximately six and a half percent, which has been consistent with past town elections. The results of voting by the citizens of Mount Airy is as follows. These will be the total number of votes, which include both the machine votes and the absentee votes. Average, one hundred and ninety-eight. Helt, two hundred and sixty-two. King, three hundred and twenty-three. And Jason, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. Poyer, two hundred and sixty-eight. Therefore, the Board of Election Supervisors acknowledges that the winners of the election were Helt, King, and Poyer.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And as far as the write-in votes were concerned, um, Pete Bowles got two, Carol Rolls got two, Dick Swanson held in there with two every year, anyone else got two, Stephen Capps got one, Kent Gregor got one, and Zachary Peters got one. Those were the votes, and I will turn over the official signed, uh, tallies, which include the original clearance of the machines at zero, the write-in tallies from each machine, and the official, uh, combined count tally, uh, which has been signed by the three members of the Board of Election Supervisors that were present at the time of tallying the votes in the evening. Uh, one of our members had a family emergency and had to leave.
We understood, we saw that.
Yes, so we, uh, but, so we have signed everything, and I will turn all election materials over to the town clerk.
Hey Bruce.
And before I finish, uh, I would like to thank my committee and especially the poll workers, it's a very long, long day, and, uh, I appreciate them hanging in there and getting everything tallied up at the end as, uh, as necessary, yes.
Bruce, just want to ask one question, did you have any statistics, just out of curiosity, between Carol and Frederick? I'm just curious.
I do, um, have those, there were two hundred, uh, and these are machine votes.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy-eight from Carol and a hundred and thirty-two from Frederick.
Okay, thank you.
Two seventy-eight Carol, one thirty-two Frederick, for a total of four-ten, those were the machine votes. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much, Bruce.
I would just like to say, I've been on that actually a couple of years, quite a few years, and, uh, it's a hard job, and it's, it's well deserved, thank you for doing that.
Yes.
Especially you, Bruce.
Chris, just from myself, I want to thank you for, uh, you served a couple of terms,